As I told you, we didn't qualify for public assistance funds under the regular program, but there's a pilot program that allows us to count any straight time and supervisory time and general administrative that was dedicated to the flood cleanup. So I ran those numbers and it comes to fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-two cents. In addition to which, because of this pilot program that we're going under, we can claim the officers and vehicle usage. So I'll be able to add that to that fourteen thousand, but I didn't have those numbers when I prepared this. And we have sixty days to get it in, and it just happened last, earlier in the week, so we'll have it in next week. In addition to which, when a disaster is declared, FEMA often makes money available to the state for hazard mitigation, and we expect that to happen this time. And then you can apply for grants for activities that will mitigate the possibility of future flooding. And so I thought that an appropriate application would be for the large pump that we need for the Third Street impoundment area, I'll call it, behind the button. And so I'm gonna go ahead and make that application, and it'll be sitting there in case the funding comes through, that they will consider. They do it on a first-come, first-served basis, so I guess if you apply before they have the money, that's pretty much first come. The Main Street Trail Project, been some development since I wrote this. We met with Citizens Electric. We identified five poles that need to be moved to, out of the way of the trail, or need the guy wires adjusted so that there's sufficient clearance when you're walking the trail, and it's eight feet is what we have to achieve. Citizens has heard today, responded, said they'll have that work done by the fifteenth of April. So that was kind of the critical question we had to have before we gave notice to proceed, because should the contractor have proceeded and Citizen not gotten the work done, the delay for the utility relocation wouldn't have been a justification for a time extension. So it created some risk. Well, we're relying on their statement that they can get it done by April fifteenth, and the state gave us authorization to issue the notice to proceed. That has occurred. He moved in equipment today. They should start Monday. The, on jury contracting, they are virtually finished with everything except some cleanup and going around and checking the settlement on the ditches. But we, they put the line down Weiner Street, and that street's in such bad condition, they could hardly keep the trench open without the surface of spalling off. Their contract called for them to do concrete repairs wherever they worked in the street. And since they couldn't cut a discreet ditch line, the concrete repair would have been sitting there with this deteriorating asphalt all around it. So we got a bid, they got a bid, on doing an asphalt overlay like we did on Ten Street, no, on Ten Street, on Seventh Street. And it turned out to save us a couple of thousand dollars. So we're gonna get an asphalt overlay cheaper than the concrete repair would have been, and that change order is on your agenda tonight.
That's the change order number seven in there?
Right. And then we'll have a final change order at your next meeting, which will be the one that adjusts the quantities. So the money we save on this is probably gonna be offset by the additional rock they had to use beyond the bid quantities when they were doing the work. But it'll all come out in wash.
So are they gonna overlay Weiner from Main to Memorial?
No, from Main to Fourth. Or not where it goes. No. Not from Main to Weiner. Yes. Main to Memorial.
Main to Memorial. Yeah, okay.
Right. Weiner doesn't come out. Didn't even call it through. Hmm? No, it don't go well with three. Still haven't heard on the AED funding, but we still have the one that the Health Department is gonna loan us till we purchase our own. At our last meeting, Alderman Stupi, John Stupi, asked me to inquire about volunteers for the garden at Market and Highway. Turns out, he went out and found volunteers, so that's taken care of. In the process of inquiring, I talked to Donna Marler, who coordinates the Florida League Garden Club, and she said, you know, I really, I need people. That the people who have been doing it, getting older, and they can't do the work, and so we really need volunteers. So I asked her if it'd be okay for me to put her name out there tonight and her phone number for anybody who may be watching that would like to volunteer to maintain these pocket gardens we have all over town that certainly add to the character of our community. So if you think you might want to volunteer for that work, call Donna Marler at 883-7388, and she would love to hear from you. That's 883-7388. Any questions? Yes, sir.
At the Mississippi Lion meeting, were you discussing anymore about extending Maple Drive?
No.
Was that ever gonna come up anymore?
It'd be up to us to take them a proposal. The last time that we met with them, they said they would cooperate. Tell us what it is you need from us, and that would require, you know, the school district and our involvement.
We'll open that discussion back up. We'll talk to the county commission and the school district.
Possible discussion would be to open that from always Highway sixty-one.
That was the original conversation. We, it's been a while ago, but we did have, the county commission was involved in the school district and us and Mississippi Lion, and it was just kind of an initial conversation, but...
The only other thing is, anybody monitoring that ditch by Subway?
Well, we...
Big bank keeps a rolling mower all the time.
In what area? Down by the apartment end, or?
No, nearby. I guess Jackie Gonsen, you can see it, a big old piece missing again.
Okay. You know, we, yes, I don't know, we've looked at it since weed stopped growing, but we're in it once a month. And one of the things that we have discovered is that keeping it as clean as we've been keeping it leads to more erosion, so I think we're gonna let it...
Probably gonna be some riff after.
Well, yeah, we put some, if there's something spalling, we'll, what I did before, 'cause it's totally private property...
Yeah, far we...
Is I contacted Subway and said, you know, if you'll buy the rock, we'll put it in, and they did.
I agree, it's private property, but when our sewer line is exposed, then we got major problems.
Well, now, of course, at some point, it's on Highway right away.
Yeah.
And then we got that problem, that we can't do work on Highway right away. But if it's, if it's slumping off out of the highway right away and on Subway's property, I'll give them a call and we'll work something out.
For some reason, which I was on the board this time, did we take over that ditch for some reason?
Yes. We needed an easement for the work that we did on...
Portis?
On Portis, that included stormwater work, because there was a stormwater pipe that came off of the hardware store's parking lot, and it was just kinda, like a cannon, shot out into the road. So we buried that and took the pipe between the apartments all the way to the ditch, in consideration of which they asked that we take over maintenance of the ditch, so we entered into a maintenance agreement with them. And so we never, we didn't take ownership of it, but we have agreed to maintain it.
Okay.
Anything else for Martin? Steve, you're first on the list.
Evening, everyone. You noticed in my report, well, first...
Martin, you mentioned this jury contracting and settling of the ditches. They did some work from yesterday.
Okay.
On Triangle Drive and back behind Tent Street, so I think they still have a few areas to address, but they're working on.
There's an area on, you say on...
Triangle Drive yesterday as well.
And there on that, yeah, the ditch that runs down South Gavory, there's some settling in that one.
Yeah, I think they got to some of that yesterday. I think they still have a little more to do, so. During routine inspection at the water plant, guys going around doing preventive maintenance on the motors and pumps, they noticed a small vibration in high-service pump number two. They usually run pretty smooth, they're one hundred and fifty horsepower electric motors. They gotta be balanced and laser lined. So they noticed a small vibration. We called in the company that we purchased the motor from. They came down, measured the vibration, it exceeded the allowable limit. The motor itself was out of warranty, but the bearing that was purchased, there was a manufacturer warranty on the bearing itself, and that's what failed the motor. So they replaced it free of cost to us. Had that not been caught, new motors, about eight grand to have rebuilt. So, I thought that was a pretty good find there. Flood drilling came in, did our annual inspection of our wells, recommendation of a couple wells being cleaned, which was already budgeted, just hasn't been performed yet this year. So we'll get that on the, on our list of things to do. Clarifier two down at the wastewater plant, we noticed some higher ammonia levels. We noticed some thicker sludge to return, running slow. From there, we started looking for the problem. We found a shear pin, which turns a big rake, the entire diameter of that tank. The shear pin was sheared off. So we had to drain the clarifier, wash it out, and get down inside it and replace the needed parts. Put it back in service and it's running great.
Any questions? No?
Steve, I think we maybe talked about it, brought it up last year, and now it's getting warm, and I don't know if, got the staff to do it, but I know it's been, it's been years since we painted any fire hydrants.
I've actually...
Is that anywhere on your list?
Yes, it is. I've actually talked with Tracy Etherington, I believe is her name, at the school, and she has a class which has volunteered to paint the fire hydrants. So we've been kinda holding off, waiting for warmer weather to see if they are still interested in it.
Okay. Great.
I'll have more on that next meeting.
Okay.
That would be a good community service if they're not interested.
Yeah, I don't know, you mean for courts?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Yeah. Do you have any?
Not lately.
No?
Well, we get them from circuit court, too, don't we?
All right. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
If you got Kenny's report here. Still could use a few more firefighters, if anybody's interested. Carla? First time?
First time.
All right.
Hi.
First time, Carla.
So...
Next commission meeting.
So I really don't have a whole lot to report on this month, because I'm still getting organized, getting settled in. But before you tonight, you do have amendments for public hearing for the Chapter 405 zoning regulations. I do have, and I failed to put in the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I do have some copies here, if anybody would like to look over those. There's an extra one that has to go. So the proposed amendments to the municipal code 405 are intended to now include the definition and regulations for self-service storage facilities in both C1 general commercial and C2 central business zone districts, which after review were discovered that the use had not been defined. So we presented the amendments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they voted seven in favor, zero against, one absent, to recommend to the Board of Alderman approval for the proposed amendments for the changes with the use of a special use permit. I've gone to some training this week. This week's been a whirlwind. Monday and Tuesday, I was in Jeff City for floodplain management, and I was back yesterday, and then today I was up in St. Peters for ADA training. And so, again, I don't have a whole lot really to report yet. I've had one planning and zoning meeting and one heritage commission meeting, and...
Yeah, there's two more training programs that she'll need to go to. One is the local public agency training. It's required by the state when we use federal dollars, that employee, an employee of the city be certified as the local public agency responsible party. I am certified, but we ought to have to, and so when that training becomes available, we'll do that. The other is, since she's kind of new to land use planning, there's kind of a Land Use Law 101 course that I'm having trouble finding, but it's the St. Louis chapter of the American Planning Association generally puts it on, that just kinda introduces you to the fundamentals of land use law, so as soon as I can find that one, we'll be sending her to that.
Then the only other thing that I had is, well, as you know, Petrie had begun a project using a federal grant for a GIS project, and that was to create a historic layer on a GIS project for labeling all of the historic properties in the city, attaching any information to them that would be beneficial for anyone in the future to be able to go back and look at, to reference, just, and to have a digital archive of everything that we have, instead of them being pieces all over town. The historic layer is about to wrap up. I mean, that's gonna be an ongoing thing. We'll be adding data as COAs are approved and things happen. There's another layer that has just been added, and there's no data in it yet, but it is the rental layer, and that information will include rental information for the properties, occupancy inspections, when they were inspected last, who the owner of the property is, who the tenant is, so that we'll be able to get a better idea of the rental properties that we have in town. And keep track better of the occupancy inspections, because that is something that we are able to keep track of, and we are able to monitor use, you know, as long as the landlord doesn't keep the water in their name. If they have a tenant, put it in their name, then we can track it, and we can make sure that the inspections are done in a timely fashion. But up until now, there really has, it's been just a matter of us trying to remember and put together some kind of a tracking system to be able to keep track of those being done. So this will help in that, and I hope over the next month or two, to be able to provide you guys with a demonstration of some of the capabilities that this system has. We also, on this, on this program, there is FEMA flood data that we pull directly from FEMA's website, and so we're able to see the floodway, the, you know, all of the information that FEMA has on the flood data, we're able to see on our map as well, so.
How much, how much of that will be available just to here, and how much available to anybody that wants to go in and look at?
Well, we're, the, any changes will be done in-house, and, but we're planning to get a kiosk that if someone came in, they could pull up a viewer information, and they would be able to access that information, to be able to see whatever they needed to see for their property that we have, we have logged, so.
But all the historical data and everything, that's not gonna be, like, available on the internet?
Well, this won't be online. They'll have to come in to access it.
Yeah.
And the other, I mean, you can do anything just about, but the other things we are going to do is the utility system, it's gonna be napped, and they're using GPS to locate all the structures and the information in all of them. We'll do streets probably after that, rate the streets, and then, you know, that's kind of the extent of it for us right now, but...
Yeah.
That'll be a great tool.
It will be. Yeah. Any other questions? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carla.
Sam?
A copy of a publication has just came out yesterday. So I'll talk about that in a little bit. First of all, just wanna pull out a couple of highlights from our report. In February, we had a little over a thousand visitors, and I went back and looked at last year's, and we had two snow days, and we were closed all day this year, and we had two snow days last year when we were closed all day. Of course, we did have one extra day this year because it was leap year, so we were a little bit ahead of last year. Skipping down to the third item there, the eclipse task force. So I have been attending these regional meetings by the St. Louis Metro Area Eclipse Task Force. I've mentioned at previous meetings that in 2017, on August 21st, there's gonna be a total eclipse of the sun, and we happen to be right in the most minutes and seconds of total coverage of the sun, and so there are a lot of people that travel the world to see eclipses, and so we're hoping to put together some kind of an event that would maybe help draw people here during that period. The mayor has started to form a task force for that point. I know August of 2017 seems like a long way away. First time, for now, we have to get through the 50th anniversary of the Jour de Fête this August, so, but it's never too soon to start planning and thinking about those things. So I've been meeting with them, and there are going to be, like, opportunities to participate in regional activities and regional promotions and PR that will be coming out of the fact that we're having this total eclipse of the sun. Yes?
Like St. Louis, it's only...
They just get a little bit, yeah. The people at the Science Center are just, you know, really miffed that they don't, they're gonna be looking at it from the side. So to them, it looks like you get a little bit of a shadow, and it passes through. You don't get it completely covered up. Here, supposedly, the sky's gonna go totally like twilight blue, and you'll be able to see the stars, and this will be about one o'clock in the afternoon. Pretty amazing, really. I've never seen anything like it, so.
Yeah.
Be pretty cool. Saturdays in St. Jen update. Who wants to be on the task force? Saturdays in St. Jen update. So I reported last time that we've started signing people up, so if there are anyone out there who's interested, who's listening and wants to sign up for a Saturday morning to walk around and greet people and wear your French colonial costume, I know there's a lot of people out there have those costumes, so call the Welcome Center, 883-709-70, and we glad to sign you up for a Saturday. Basically, that's gonna start with Memorial Day in May and go all the way through September. I've also started signing up demonstrators, like craft demonstrators and musicians, and as you know from your last meeting, we applied to the Muni Band Grant Program to ask them for funds to help with musicians, 'cause this is the performance of live music. And I did receive a response, not a formal response, but I have received an indication that we will have, we have partial approval on what we asked for, and we'll know more in May about funds for that program this summer. Outreach, I just wanted to draw your attention to the bottom line there. On April 2nd, it's a Saturday, we will be hosting the regional meeting of the Greater Federation of Women's Clubs here in St. Genevieve, so that'll be a group of leaders from the various women's clubs in southeast Missouri, about seventy-two people on a Saturday here on April 2nd. And then, new business news, so I'm also, each year about this time, I gather up quotes for advertising in the regional publications that advertise things to do this summer, so they're called usually something like the Summer Fund Guide. So the Belleville News Democrat has one, the South County newspapers, Webster Kirkwood Times, all these regional papers have special publications, and we try to get at least a half-page of advertising with tourism in St. Genevieve and some of the individual businesses participating in that. So we're in the process of gathering all that information, we'll be sharing it out to the businesses and organizations shortly. And new business news, as many of you probably know, in February, we had Whatnots and Oddities open at the Monius Building, and Rusty Farms is another new business that opened on Merchant Street. In the month of March, we've had Reinhardt and Reinhardt Studios, Riverside Studios, Teresa Cavens reopened her studio. She was considering closing it and selling it, but she decided to keep it open. And also Greyhawk Exercise Studios. So this is the one that's gonna be on Merchant Street, next door to the St. Genevieve Winery and the former Citizens Electric Service Building. And over in what was formerly the Hayloft Gallery, the art gallery above the Bigfield Cafe, which is now Simple to Sassy, the owner, Cara Burt, Simple to Sassy, and Janice Warden from Stella and Me are gonna go in together on a speakeasy. So that'll be opening soon in that upstairs location. Also, as you know, if you've been in City Hall recently, Megan Hook has transferred to City Hall, so an ad was run in the local advertising for the last two weeks for a Welcome Center assistant. I've gotten those resumes and have started to schedule interviews, so soon we'll have some help down at the Welcome Center. I've had some people filling in, which has been great, too. So the publication that I gave you, this is a publication that really covers the whole Mississippi River, and they have a two-page article about, of course, the New Year's Week flood, and I marked in there the page, they did a special article about St. Genevieve on page 11. So that's your copy to keep, and I thought you might just enjoy seeing it. They mention, you know, some of the attractions of our French colonial and historic section. They mentioned several businesses, where to stay, what to do while you're here, and the natural beauty in the area. So just wanted to share that with you. This is a publication that we get on a quarterly basis by virtue of being one of the Great River Road Welcome Centers. So all of the Welcome Centers up and down the Mississippi River have received this information, including the St. Genevieve article, so. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Sam, you mentioned that the Greyhawk, the exercise...
Yes.
Was in the Citizens Electric building. It's not, it's in the Marzuko, old Marzuko Electric building, not Citizens Electric.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, formerly where the antique store was.
Was First Settlement Antiques.
First Settlement Antiques, yeah.
Right.
You're right. I had Marzuko's on my mind. I mean, I said Citizens Electric, but, thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
Anybody else have anything from the board meetings? Any public comments from anybody? All right, I'll go to the minutes of the March 10th meeting.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Treasurers' reports for February.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, being at 6:00, we will open a public hearing. The Board, the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing on the following Amendment to Chapter 405 zoning regulations of the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances. Article 2, Definitions, Section 405.020, Definitions, add the definition of self-service, self-service storage facility. A building or group of buildings in a compound that contains individual compartmentalized and controlled access stalls or lockers, the use of which is limited to the storage of customers' goods and wares. B, Amendment to Chapter 405 zoning regulations, Article 3, Districts and District Regulations, Section 405.080. C1, General Commercial District Regulations. A1, Add AF Self-Storage Facility with Special Use Permit. C, Amendment to Chapter 405 zoning regulations, Article 3, Districts and District Regulations, Section 405.090. C2, Central Business District Regulations. A1, amend language to read F, Warehousing to include self-storage facility with special use permit.
Take a break?
Anybody in the board, any questions? Anybody in the audience? It is a public hearing.
I'm just surprised it wasn't in there already. So, that's really just a housekeeping thing, right?
Okay. Okay. Now, being 6:01, we'll close the public hearing. And you've got, obviously, you've got an ordinance to deal with that a little bit. Resolution 201614, a resolution reappointing Shawn Zerwick to the St. Genevieve Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Old Business Bill Number 4095, second reading.
An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Central Power Systems and Services of St. Louis, Missouri for the preventive maintenance and inspection services of the water and wastewater departments' backup generators in an amount not to exceed $4,913.95.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Well, we did, this will extend to City Hall and the Fire District. Our, this contract has, it's their multiple-unit contract, so.
Good. Okay.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Rick Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4095 now becomes ordinance 4032.
Thank you. Bill Number 4096, second reading.
An ordinance approving change order number six in the amount of $10,747 and a final contract amount of $1,099,548.80 on the contract with T. Jury Contracting Incorporated of Bloomsdale, Missouri for the St. Genevieve Water Main Replacement Project Number 14-5960.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4096 now becomes ordinance 4033.
Okay, thank you. New Business, Bill Number 4097, first reading.
An ordinance approving change order number seven in the amount of $2,536 and a final contract amount of $1,102,848.80 on the contract with T. Jury Contracting Incorporated Bloomsdale, Missouri for the St. Genevieve Water Main Replacement Project Number 14-5960.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Bill Number 4098, first read.
An ordinance amending the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 405 zoning regulations, Section 405.020, Definitions, Section 405.080, C1, General Commercial District Regulations, and Section 405.090, C2, Central Business District Regulations, as set forth below.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Do you want a second reading on that?
Under other business, the master gardeners are requesting a street closure for Market Street for one-half block east of Main Street for 2016 St. Genevieve Garden Walk and Plant Sale, May 14th and 15th, from 7:00 a.m. to approximately 4:00 p.m.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody else? I have one other thing. You know, we, it's time again, I guess, for, to talk about, remind people about our pet peeve is with the Special Road District. And again, this year, it looks like the taxpayers in the city, which are, there's like 27, a little over 2,700 voters in the city limits, will contribute about $160,000 to the Special Road District. We've not gotten word, well, as Martin reported, I think, the last meeting or the meeting before, that it's questionable this year whether the city will receive anything from the Special Road District this year. We've received over the, after some prodding over the last few years, I guess we've, we've probably three years now up to this year, we've gotten about $25,000 a year, too.
If we've received two, this is the third.
This would have been the third year. To be used on, mainly on Fourth Street, was a road that's been determined that we could use Special Road District funds on. Well, the thing has been, obviously, that tax and the city taxpayers, and I believe it's, it's an education thing, that we need to try to educate your constituents, everybody in the, in the city of what is actually happening here. I mean, one person said to me recently, "Well, this sounds a lot like what the county's going through with the library," and, and it's, it's a whole lot like that. You're getting, the city residents are paying a tax, and they're basically not getting anything for it, and they've been paying it for years, well, going back to the 1920s. And the tax was put into effect really to, from what I understand, is, is for people living outside the city to have ways and transportation or means to get their products to the market in the city, and ways for people to, to travel into the city and maintain those roads to get people into the city, and that's why the city residents were involved in trying to maintain those roads. Well, we're not in the 1920s anymore, and that is an archaic law that probably needs to be eliminated, to be honest with you, but we are paying for roads, and we are paying a lot, $160,000, to maintain roads that are outside the city limits. There's, there's really nothing special about the Special Road District, and, and the city taxpayers are really not getting their money's worth for the amount of, for what they're paying for. And it's, there's 2,700 voters in the city limits, there's 1,900 voters in the rest of the Special Road District. So, I, we've been neglected, the city's been neglected for decades, I believe, as far as having a voice in the Special Road District. We've been ignored, basically, and the city's been ignored, and they have found a way, again, in the last couple of years, anyway, to at least give us $25,000. They have the ability to give us up to 25% of their budget, which would be about $125,000 they could give us, which is still not giving the taxpayers of the city the amount back that they're putting into it. So, I, I, really, we really need to push this thing and to educate the voters of the city that this thing's unfair. I mean, it's like the library, again, like the library tax, and even worse, we don't really even have represent, anybody representing anybody on the city or a voice. I don't think the commissioners have really, really looked out for the 2,700 voters in the city in, in the decisions that they've been making. So, it's, it's something we, we need to educate. It's money that should be going into the city streets. If you read the paper this week, you saw where the county commission was looking at replacing a bridge somewhere that was built back in the 40s. Well, if you go over and look at this bridge over here, there's a plaque on it, says "Built by Special Road District Day" in 1934. Well, that bridge is over 70 years old, and it was built by a Special Road District. So, it, it goes to say that, that road, that Fourth Street, from, from the maintenance where the highway ends all the way up to the White Sands Road, could be maintained, or we could use money from the Special Road District to maintain that. We also have a bridge on the other end that we know is a bottleneck when it comes to flash flooding, and it was probably built, probably somewhere around that same time, I'm not sure, but it could stand to be, obviously, it could stand to be replaced and wider, so the water could go through there. It's...
What is the reasoning for not giving us the money? I, I've heard that a couple of the commissioners said, "Well, we can't see what you're spending the money on."
Well, we were, we were, the idea of the board was to save up enough money to, to save it, to where we could do a decent project on Fourth Street. I mean, we can easily spend between there and, and Fourth, and, and with, if you look at stormwater, water drainage and everything, just to Fort, just to the four-way stop here, we could easily spend a half a million dollars without a problem. I mean, if you look at what we spent on Roger Street, that little block was a half a million dollars, but there were sidewalks and stormwater on it, but that was, so we've been saving the money to be able to maybe put with our money one of these days, but we've only got about 50, I guess, about $50,000 sitting in that account right now, so.
So, how do we go about effecting a change?
Well, probably, to talk to your people, there is, I will say without saying much, that, I mean, there is no one running for, there is an open seat on that, on the ballot this time next week, on April the 5th. Nobody has filed for one of the three commissioners' position. My opinion, somebody in the city ought to, ought to, ought to do that.
What are you saying? Which commissioner? Special Road District?
Special Road District. We, we need a voice on there. I mean, it's...
So, we need to, really, to support somebody in a write-in campaign? Without getting into, you know, things we probably shouldn't talk about?
I mean, it, you know, we, we need, we've been neglected, and I, I don't know that that's going to get changed, and the only way to, to start would be at least to try to have a voice on there, I would hope.
Is there a way to change the law?
Um, that probably would have to come from the state, from the legislature, wouldn't it?
It would require legislative change. There is a provision in the statute for dissolving the Special Road Districts, so.
I mean, of course, that would probably cost money, I'm sure, but if there's a way we could prove our case that, you know, we're paying and we're not getting anything. Um... It's kind of up to them how they want to spend the money. It's kind of up to the three, up to the three commissioners. They're elected.
No, because they're elected. I mean, like, they're like...
Right, yeah.
They have to follow the state statute.
Right.
So, and, and for me as a citizen of St. Genevieve, not representing myself for Ward One as an alderman, since there's no one on the ballot, we have to write somebody in.
Right.
And former alderman Joe Steiger has said that he would be willing to serve in that capacity, so me personally, I'm going to write in Joe Steiger, because I know that Joe would get in there and fight tooth and nail for the city to recover some of this money. If we don't have any representation, city person, that is, civic-minded, city-minded person, 10 years we'll be talking about this again. Because there's nothing we can do to affect change, except affect that board. And so, me personally, not, not as an alderman and not representing Ward One, me personally, I'm going to write in for former alderman Joe Steiger. I have a lot of confidence that he would get in there and fight for some of that money for the city.
Well, again, I, in recent, what's been in the paper recently about the library, I mean, you can, you can almost take that word for word and compare it of people paying taxes and not getting much for it, so I think, I think it's a nice comparison here. It's just, I don't think the voters in St. Genevieve don't realize it, and they, city limits, there's more voters, they've got really control over it, and not getting anything for it, so. That's all I've got. Anybody else in there? Yes, John.
Can we have a month or so of open burning with the spring coming up here?
Long as it stops being so dang windy.
Well, I don't... Providing, it's not...
Yeah, I mean, we got the, yeah.
You want to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
For the month.
Month of April?
Of April?
Yeah.
Okay, so only start at April 1st?
Mark. Say from now until the end of April?
Okay.
Okay.
Do you second that?
Somebody did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Anything else? All right?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And, thank you, I think.
I will. Move back?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. I guess everybody's ready. I see. Are you? Where's America? He can't run. Where's Terry? Yeah. Also, my trucking business. Feel right. I appreciate it. I think we all- Let's get this work session. I don't know how long to decide. Have a test area, a side of test area, test it out. If people don't mind putting the lights. If they do mind, then we assume the cost of maintenance on the old lights. So it's just- We just want you to have an hour and a discussion about whether the lights are too- Again, I don't know why we're paying for the old lights. We won't be. Wait a minute, I don't know what I said. Martin, I'll tell you that. I just talked to him. Oh, did he buy change? I didn't say that. Yeah, I was getting out and about. You know, maybe it goes with mine. Get out of port. We're okay. I'd say we're good. See whatever. Our investment will be recovered in five years. Otherwise, we only, we'll be responsible for storing and maintaining the old lights ourselves. You can't call citizens to say, "Hey, this light's out." We would have to have a piece of equipment so we could go and fix the light bulb, is what I understand in talking to Martin. So that just, I mean, that's just-
I don't know if it's fired yesterday because of the year, and until just recently, he was scared to drive. He's finally over that, so he'll get it pretty soon here.
Well, it's, it's, uh, eight o'clock, four, eight fifty, eight forty? I don't really know. Yeah. Um, well, I, I wish I could be inclined to watch anything else, but I, I would be, uh, we're received. Hopefully the best. See you, Frank. If you have a problem on, I can eat.
How about you guys? Is it fun? I have a good chair, that's it. Yeah, he's driving. Big chair, yeah.
That's terrible.
Switch over, although we have no obligation to do so. And, uh, it's the kind of decision that is going to have an impact on the community because it's a different kind of lighting, it's got different coverages, and people are going to, are going to notice the difference. And there's a cost associated with it, uh, which is capturable from the energy savings, and we'll cover that tonight.
What is, what is the cost?
The issue, the issue is that, uh, it's kind of changing the ambiance of the community. We won't be doing it downtown. It'll be all the other light that we have. Is, um, he's proposing a, uh, if we want to do it, then we pick up kind of a pilot area, and change them out and see kind of how it looks and how people feel about it. And that's kind of a policy issue, where you might want to do that. So, it's a little complicated, I thought he would explain it.
Yeah. So, as Martin said, citizens, uh, for our security light program, so that's when you might call me up and say, "I need a light in my backyard," and we have a program where you just pay a monthly fee, and we maintain it, and so on and so forth. For our security light program, citizens, here in the next month or so, we're going to go from, uh, the high-pressure sodium, so the amber color that there's tons of them out there, we're switching over to LED, as, as Martin said. So, there's, there's both energy savings to be captured there, as well as maintenance savings, uh, per the manufacturer. Uh, we've confirmed the energy savings. We've been, we've had our own pilot program going on for about two years now. The price on these, on these fixtures have come way down. The very first ones we put in our pilot program was like six hundred bucks a fixture, and, and they've come down now to where they're about two hundred dollars a fixture. So waiting was a good thing. So, we're going to do this with the security light program. Today, our security light program kind of mimics, or the lights we use in our security light program are the same lights we use in the street lighting program for the city of Saint Genevieve and the city of Perryville. Those two communities, we have, that are the, those are the only street lighting contracts we have. Um, of the other communities like Bloomsdale and Crosstown and things like that, they go strictly on the security light program. So, anyway, so we're going to switch, and, and I'm not here to sell you at all, I'm just here to inform you what we're going to do and why we're going to do it. So, we've been looking at it for two years. Um, it really makes sense from a cost perspective for citizens to do this. Our power supplier wants us to do it because of the energy savings. Um, and they want us to do it so bad that in two thousand sixteen, they're offering a rebate per fixture for everyone that we replace. So, we're going to take advantage of that. Um, and, and you might ask, "Well, why are they doing that?" Well, it's, it's pretty simple. It's more cost-effective for them to encourage us to save money than to spend many more dollars to go build a power plant. That's exactly what it is. So, the, I talked to Wabash, and obviously, we had internal discussion with citizens, and going forward, if these two cities would want to kind of adopt our security light, our approach to our security light program, we will pass that rebate on to the city. So, do you all, you may not know exactly how the contract, this, this city streetlight contract works, and I don't want to bore you if you already do, but it might do you well to understand that before I go any further. You okay, everybody okay with that? So today, if the city wants a new street light, Martin gives us a letter requesting a light at a particular location. What citizens will do, we'll go install a new light, if it needs a new pole, that's okay too. We'll install a new light, new pole, at no cost, as long as there's a light about every hundred and seventy-five feet. We'll do it at no cost. Going forward, the city pays the energy on a monthly basis that that light uses, and they pay for the maintenance. Citizens takes care of the conductor in between the lights, so if the wire fails, a tree takes it down, that's us. But if the bulb fails, that's city expense. So basically, that's how it works.
Well, okay, who, what, what expense now, if, if the light fails now within the city of Saint Genevieve? Who, who has the, you, you absorb that cost, citizens absorbs that cost?
No, Rick, that, actually, that's just what I explained. If it's, yeah, if it's the bulb, if it's the eye, it's the ballast, we go out, we, we, uh, we make the repair. And the city today, they purchase their own materials. Typically, we have them in our warehouse, we grab it, we go out, and we fix it. And, and we, we usually charge about a half on our light, regardless of where it's at, regardless of where we're coming from. So, you know, pretty conservative there. But, but that's how it works. Now, if the conductor goes down, that's citizens pays for that. You know, if the wire in between them, or if there's a connection, that's us. So, the reason that's important, twofold. The energy savings of going to LED impacts the city directly, because you're paying for that energy. And to change that light out to an LED, so now we're taking that fixture out as if though it failed, and putting a new one back on, that would be an expense to, to the city. So does that kind of make sense? So here's, here's how citizens is going to approach their security light program. Going forward, like I said, we haven't picked a start date, probably be a month or so. If John calls me up and he, he, he wants a new, uh, security light, it's going to be an LED. So all new installs will be an LED. If we go out and repair an existing, so Donnie has had one for five years, but the bulb went out, and it's the high-pressure sodium, if we go out to repair it, we're not going to put a, we're not going to fix the high-pressure sodium, we're going to put up an LED. That's our approach. And that's the approach we'd like for the two cities to entertain as well. So, with that in mind, is, does everybody have this sheet here? So, on the top of this sheet, I've got city of Saint Genevieve overhead street lighting. So Martin pointed out earlier, and it's important that we remember this, we're talking about overhead street lighting. None of the ornamental street lighting around the Great River Road, anything like that. It's, it's all what's up on the poles. So what is the cost of this thing? So estimated seventy watt LED installed cost. So the light that we selected, and I've got some pictures here I'll pass out, on the two fixtures that we selected to replace the hundred watt high-pressure sodium. So that's, that looks like the security light, it's the smaller one, it's not the big teardrop Cobra head looking one. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. So, the new light costs, an installed cost, two thousand sixteen, so two thousand sixteen's important too, because right now, that's the only time the Wabash rebate's effective, is two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. So that's about a two hundred and two dollar light and about fifty-six dollars worth of labor. That's what that is. It's all, all straight costs, that's what it costs citizens. The rebate's seventy-five bucks, so the final cost is a hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents installed cost. So hang on to that number. So in the first blue square there, LED fixture features. So the manufacturer is warranty, warranty, has a warranty on these fixtures of ten years, uh, parts and fix, parts and fixture excluding the surge device. So there's, there's a pretty robust, uh, lightning arrester, basically, in the light. And if it fails, it's not covered under warranty, it's about a thirty dollar item. So that, that's really the only maintenance item that maybe we're looking at. The, the, uh, the manufacturers, I, I almost had them talked into covering that in a ten year warranty, and I think eventually they will, but right now, they're not. Dealing with two manufacturers, they both have the same terms. Another feature, the energy savings, what is it? It's about forty-two percent between what's out there today, the hundred watt, versus the seventy watt LED. So it's significant. So moving down the sheet, I just had some examples here. What's existing for the city of Saint Genevieve on the left, the hundred watt HPS, that's what we're talking about right now, there's two hundred and sixty-two of them, out scattered about the city. Then another style of light is a one seventy-five mercury vapor. So that's a wider looking light, there's two hundred and thirty-fives of those. I would, I would suggest for the city to consider the seventy watt LED to replace those two lights, because the output of the seventy watt LED is equal or exceeds the hundred watt HPS and the one seventy-five watt mercury vapor. So hang on to that one. The next one is two hundred and fifty watt high-pressure sodium. So that's the bigger teardrop looking thing, the amber, yellow color, there's ninety-six of those. And then the next one is a four hundred watt mercury vapor, so that's a teardrop looking thing, but it's a wider light. And there's thirty-six of those. So not very many. Uh, that old four, four hundred, that, that's a real energy hog, that, that's an old one. Today, we're still working on our replacement for those two fixtures, we should have that figured out in about the next thirty days. So you've got a total of six hundred and twenty-nine lights out there. So over to the right, here again, I'm not trying to sell you anything, I just wanted to give you some examples. If we were to replace the hundred watt high-pressure sodium and the one seventy-five watt mercury vapor, if we were to replace those two in two thousand sixteen, so let's just run that hundred watt line across, um, the LED two thousand sixteen installed cost would be sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We apply the rebate, the total would be forty-eight thousand, seventy-seven, there'd be a, a twenty-nine percent savings there, nineteen thousand, six fifty, just due to the rebate. On the one seventy-five watt line, you can see a sixty thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar install cost. The rebate applied leaves a balance of forty-three, one twenty-two, fifty, for seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars worth of savings. That's an install cost. Now, um, the, the savings is strictly the rebate that we're talking about there. Um, we'll talk about the energy savings here down below a little bit. So what are you paying today in average maintenance cost? Because remember, these guys are going to warranty this thing for ten years. Now, there's going to be a few failures, you know, I mean, that's going to happen, but, but they're, they're warranting, they have a warranty for ten years. So, over the last two years, for the city of Saint Genevieve, you averaged about seventy-three repairs a year. Each repair, and these are average numbers, is about a hundred and ten bucks. So if we go out there, it needs a bulb and an eye, it's about what it is. If it's a ballast, it's going to be a little bit more. Um, so you're spending about eight thousand dollars a year. Um, the next line, projected average maintenance costs when replacing the high-pressure sodium with LED in lieu of a repair. So this is if you would adopt what citizens is going to do with his security light program. So if the, if the HPS goes out, don't fix it, put up a new LED, and start, start enjoying the savings, so to speak. So, but if you do that, there's a premium that comes with that initially. So if we say there's seventy-three repairs going forward this year, it'd be a hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents per, so an upfront cost of thirteen thousand, three ninety-five. So that's a premium of five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's a premium. Uh, the next line, what I stuck this line in here for, keep in mind, they say they're warranting them for one year. In our return on investment calculation-
Warranted it for ten years?
Yeah, warranted for ten years. When we did our own return on investment, we said, "We're going to go, have to go back to it at least once." We wanted to be conservative. So, this next line, if we had to go back one time, I've got just the labor cost there that would be, let me make sure I don't get myself confused here. Um, two thousand fifteen, one repair every ten years. Okay, so if we, it, it, this would be if you didn't have to go back because of the warranty, it's going to last ten years, you would save fifty, fifty-six dollars and fifty sev- fifty cents times seventy-three, so that's forty, four thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. So you can see, that damn near cancels that initial premium out, almost. So that's just an example. So the bottom blue square, this is a, a return on investment calculation, a pretty simple one. We got an install cost of one eighty-three, fifty, annual energy sa- so this is one unit, annual energy savings of thirty-four dollars and eighty cents, which you'll realize directly. The average maintenance cost, I, I simply took that labor and divided by ten, so an annual. So the, the payback on the light is four and a half years. So if they're warranting for ten years, they're paid back in four and a half years, you've got five and a half years of whatever term you want to use, gravy or whatever. Um, also, Martin, did, were you able to copy the- Yeah. Okay, so, we just put together a quick map with a legend that shows you to scatter throughout the city where each type of light is. And the reason I wanted to provide this is if the city of Saint Genevieve kind of adopts citizens' approach on going forward, um, on repairs or new installs, that could be one step. But as Martin said earlier, personally, I had to do this for myself, actually, in our pilot program. I think it would be a good idea, pick a street, a short street or whatever, maybe there's five lights, maybe there's six lights in a row, and consider installing five or six LEDs in a row, so that you get the feel for it. The, the fixtures we selected, it's, it's a very white light. If you bought any of these lights for your house, there's a daylight, there's a, a warm light, and there's another one. Daylight is what we selected, so it's a very white light. Um, we thought that's going to be best for security lights and street lighting. Um, so, here again, just for your consideration, uh, you know, you'd get a feel for what the city residents take, you know, their take on it, what we all think about it, and that would give you a better idea as to, is this a good idea or not? I mean, we're going to do it for our security lights, um, because we think it's the right thing to do because of energy savings and maintenance savings. So, I got one other sheet here for you. The, the two lights, the two manufacturers, if you want, just take one and pass them around. The two manufacturers we're going to use for this particular replacement is a company by name of Evluma. Evluma is the one that has two pictures on it, oh, they both have two pictures. It's the, it's the one that's got the lettering on it, that's Evluma. The other one is American Electric. And you can see they're both the teardrop look, uh, actually, they look a little bit more like a street light than a security light. So they both have a little bit of a refractor on it, and what I mean by the refractor, some people call that a shade.
A fugue.
Yep, that's another term for it. Uh, it's not nearly as much as the lights we have out there today, because this, the LED fixtures are designed to shoot the light down and not have so much up in the air, which supposedly, it's a good thing, it's a little bit something that we all have to adjust to, because we're used to looking out, you know, Randy's got the house with the street light right next to the corner, you can look up and see it. These, you won't be able to see up in the air that much, but there's more light being projected down. So, I know I'm doing a lot of talking, so I'll take a breath, and you can ask any questions you want. Like I said, I'm not here to sell you at all. If the city of Saint Genevieve wants to continue with the HPS light, we'll do that. We highly recommend eventually changing because of the, the energy savings and because of the maintenance cost savings. Like I said, it is a four and a half year payback, um, but we'll do what you want.
So, Ron, if we went ahead and said, "I'm going to spend ninety-one thousand dollars to go in and replace five hundred lights," basically, pay that back in four and a half years?
The energy savings and maintenance savings, uh, like I said, this is a pretty simple return on investment calculation, but that's, that's what we've come up with.
Because you don't, or you are the, that's going to be, do they offer any financing?
They do not. Um, the, and keep in mind, this rebate, I don't know if Wabash should do that in two thousand seventeen, it is only two thousand sixteen for right now. Now, they did it in two thousand fifteen, but I don't know if they'll keep it going. So, um-
We got a loan from the Department of Energy for lighting for a building that we own, uh, based on the energy that was saved.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that we couldn't do it for street lighting. Uh, arguably, we did it for street lighting.
This, this sounds, uh, thank you-
Sure.
For clar- I mean, you answered kind of every question I think I had.
Yeah, me too.
Um, it's, obviously, it's a modernization, and we're going to have to move to it eventually. Right now, there's an economic incentive in the, the rebate-
Right.
-on the fixtures. And that one of the areas of focus of, of the city of Saint Genevieve that we don't have time, or for whatever reason, we don't put a lot of effort into, is sustainability. And, and this is a, a really big opportunity to take a nice step in the city of Saint Genevieve from a sustainability standpoint. Uh, so to borrow the money and do them all at once, I'm, I'm, I'm down for that, I'm good for doing it as you want to, and wherever you guys decide a pilot program would, would be the best, that would make the most sense, let's, let's, let's move forward.
I mean, to, to me, four and a half years is, is nothing, then you're going to save the energy going forward, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's just a cash flow issue.
Yeah, well, no, I-
We have ninety-eight thousand dollars sitting out.
Yeah, if we could pull that loan thing off, uh-
And if not, it would be just as, as they needed to be repaired, they'd be replaced.
That would be a longer roll, a longer roll out.
So it'd be a longer roll, a longer roll out.
Take advantage of that, and you might ask, well, why are they doing that? Well, it's pretty simple. It's more cost effective for them to encourage just to save money than to spend many more dollars to go build a power plant. That's exactly what it is. So, I talked to Wabash, and obviously, we had internal discussion with citizens, and going forward, if these two cities would want to kind of adopt our security light, our approach to our security light program, we will pass that rebate on to the city. So, do you all, you may not know exactly how the contract, this city streetlight contract works, and I don't want to bore you if you already do, but it might do you well to understand that before I go any further. You okay, everybody okay with that? So today, if the city wants a new streetlight, Martin gives us a letter requesting a light at a particular location. What citizens will do, we'll go install a new light, if it needs a new pole, that's okay too. We'll install a new light, new pole, at no cost, as long as there's a light about every 175 feet. We'll do it at no cost. Going forward, the city pays the energy on a monthly basis that that light uses, and they pay for the maintenance. Citizens takes care of the conductor in between the lights, so if the wire fails, a tree takes it down, that's us. But if the bulb fails, that's city expense. So basically, that's how it works.
Okay, who, what expense now, if the light fails now within the city of St. Genevieve? Who has the, you absorb that cost, citizens absorbs that cost?
No, Rick, that, actually, that's just what I explained. If it's, yeah, if it's the bulb, if it's the eye, it's the ballast, we go out, we make the repair. And the city today, they purchase their own materials. Typically, we have them in our warehouse. We grab it, we go out, and we fix it. And we usually charge about a half on our light, regardless of where it's at, regardless of where we're coming from. So, you know, pretty conservative there. But that's how it works. Now, if the conductor goes down, that's citizens pays for that. You know, if the wire in between them, or if there's a connection, that's us. So, the reason that's important, twofold. The energy savings of going to LED impacts the city directly, because you're paying for that energy. And to change that light out to an LED, so now we're taking that fixture off as if though it failed, and putting a new one back on, that would be an expense to the city. So does that kind of make sense? So here's how citizens is going to approach their security light program. Going forward, like I said, we haven't picked a start date, probably be a month or so. If John calls me up and he wants a new security light, it's going to be an LED. So all new installs will be an LED. If we go out and repair an existing, so Donnie has had one for five years, but the bulb went out, and it's the high-pressure sodium, if we go out to repair it, we're not going to put up, we're not going to fix the high-pressure sodium, we're going to put up an LED. That's our approach. And that's the approach we'd like for the two cities to entertain as well. So with that in mind, does everybody have this sheet here? So, on the top of this sheet, I've got City of St. Genevieve overhead street lighting. So Martin pointed out earlier, and it's important that we remember this, we're talking about overhead street lighting. None of the ornamental street lighting around the Great River Road, anything like that. It's all what's up on the poles. So what is the cost of this thing? So estimated 70 watt LED installed cost. So the light that we selected, and I've got some fixtures here I'll pass out, on the two fixtures that we selected to replace the 100 watt high-pressure sodium. So that's, that looks like the security light. It's the smaller one. It's not the big teardrop, Cobra head looking one. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. So the new light costs, an installed cost, 2016, so 2016 is important too, because right now, that's the only time the Wabash rebate's effective. It's $258.50. So that's about a $202 light, and about $56 worth of labor. That's what that is. It's all straight costs. That's what it costs citizens. The rebate's 75 bucks, so the final cost is $183.50 installed cost. So hang on to that number. So in the first blue square there, LED fixture features. So the manufacturer is warranty, warranty, has a warranty on these fixtures of 10 years, parts and fixture excluding the surge device. So there's a pretty robust lightning arrester, basically, in the light. And if it fails, it's not covered under warranty. It's about a $30 item. So that, that's really the only maintenance item that maybe we're looking at. The manufacturers, I almost had them talked into covering that in a 10-year warranty. I think eventually they will, but right now, they're not. Dealing with two manufacturers, they both have the same terms. Another feature, the energy savings, what is it? It's about 42% between what's out there today, the 100 watt, versus the 70 watt LED. So it's significant. So moving down the sheet, I just had some examples here. What's existing for the city of St. Genevieve on the left, the 100 watt HPS, that's what we're talking about right now. There's 262 of them, out scattered about the city. Then another style of light is a 175 mercury vapor. So that's a wider looking light. There's 235 of those. I would suggest for the city to consider the 70 watt LED to replace those two lights, because the output of the 70 watt LED is equal or exceeds the 100 watt HPS and the 175 watt mercury vapor. So hang on to that one. The next one is 250 watt high-pressure sodium. So that's the bigger teardrop looking thing, the amber yellow color. There's 96 of those. And then the next one is a 400 watt mercury vapor. So that's a teardrop looking thing, but it's a wider light. And there's 36 of those. So not very many. That old 400, that's a real energy hog. That's an old one. Today, we're still working on our replacement for those two fixtures. We should have that figured out in about the next 30 days. So you've got a total of 629 lights out there. So over to the right, here again, I'm not trying to sell you anything, I just wanted to give you some examples. If we were to replace the 100 watt high-pressure sodium and the 175 watt mercury vapor, if we were to replace those two in 2016, so let's just run that 100 watt line across. The LED 2016 installed cost would be $67,727. We apply the rebate, the total would be $48,077. There'd be a 29% savings there, $19,650, just due to the rebate. On the 175 watt line, you can see a $60,747 install cost. The rebate applied leaves a balance of $43,122.50 for $17,625 worth of savings. That's an install cost. Now, the savings is strictly the rebate that we're talking about there. We'll talk about the energy savings here down below a little bit. So what are you paying today in average maintenance costs? Because remember, these guys are going to warranty this thing for 10 years. Now, there's going to be a few failures, you know, I mean, that's going to happen, but they're warranty, they have a warranty for 10 years. So over the last two years, for the city of St. Genevieve, you averaged about 73 repairs a year. Each repair, and these are average numbers, is about $110. So if we go out there, it needs a bulb and an eye, it's about what it is. If it's a ballast, it's going to be a little bit more. So you're spending about $8,000 a year. The next line, projected average maintenance costs when replacing a high-pressure sodium with LED in lieu of a repair. So this is if you would adopt what citizens is going to do with his security light program. So if the, if the HPS goes out, don't fix it, put up a new LED, and start enjoying the savings, so to speak. But if you do that, there's a premium that comes with that initially. So if we say there's 73 repairs going forward this year, it'd be $183.50 per. So an upfront cost of $13,395. So that's a premium of $5,365. That's a premium. The next line, what I stuck this line in here for, keep in mind, they say they're warranting them for one year. In our return on investment calculation-
Warranted it for 10 years?
Yeah, warranted for 10 years. When we did our own return on investment, we said, we're going to have to go back to it at least once. We wanted to be conservative. So this next line, if we had to go back one time, I've got just the labor costs there that would be, let me make sure I don't get myself confused here. 2015, one repair every 10 years. Okay, so if we, this would be if you didn't have to go back because of the warranty, it's going to last 10 years, you would save $56.50 times 73, so that's $4,124. So you can see, that damn near cancels that initial premium out, almost. So that's just an example. So the bottom blue square, this is a return on investment calculation, a pretty simple one. We got an install cost of $183.50, annual energy, so this is one unit, annual energy savings of $34.80, which you'll realize directly. The average maintenance cost, I simply took that labor and divided by 10, so an annual. So the payback on the light is four and a half years. So if they're warranting for 10 years, they're paid back in four and a half years, you've got five and a half years of whatever term you want to use, gravy or whatever. Also, Martin, were you able to copy the?
Yeah.
Okay, so we just put together a quick map with a legend that shows you scattered throughout the city where each type of light is. And the reason I wanted to provide this is if the city of St. Genevieve kind of adopts citizens' approach on going forward on repairs or new installs, that could be one step. But as Martin said earlier, personally, I had to do this for myself, actually, in our pilot program. I think it would be a good idea, pick a street, a short street or whatever, maybe there's five lights, maybe there's six lights in a row, and consider installing five or six LEDs in a row, so that you get the feel for it. The fixtures we selected, it's a very white light. If you bought any of these lights for your house, there's a daylight, there's a warm light, and there's another one. Daylight is what we selected. So it's a very white light. We thought that's going to be best for security lights and street lighting. So here again, just for your consideration, you know, you'd get a feel for what the city residents take, you know, their take on it, what we all think about it, and that would give you a better idea as to, is this a good idea or not? I mean, we're going to do it for our security lights, because we think it's the right thing to do because of energy savings and maintenance savings. So I got one other sheet here for you. The two lights, the two manufacturers, if you want to just take one and pass them around. The two manufacturers we're going to use for this particular replacement is a company by name of Evluma. Evluma is the one that has two pictures on it, oh, they both have two pictures. It's the, it's the one that's got the lettering on it. That's Evluma. The other one is American Electric. And you can see they're both the teardrop look, actually, they look a little bit more like a street light than a security light. So they both have a little bit of a refractor on it. And what I mean by the refractor, some people call that a shade.
A hue.
Yep, that's another term for it. It's not nearly as much as the lights we have out there today, because the LED fixtures are designed to shoot the light down and not have so much up in the air, which supposedly it's a good thing. It's a little bit something that we all have to adjust to, because we're used to looking out, you know, Randy's got the house with the streetlight right next to the corner, you can look up and see it. These, you won't be able to see up in the air that much, but there's more light being projected down. So, I know I'm doing a lot of talking, so I'll take a breath, and you can ask any questions you want. Like I said, I'm not here to sell you at all. If the city of St. Genevieve wants to continue with the HPS light, we'll do that. We highly recommend eventually changing because of the energy savings and because of the maintenance cost savings. Like I said, it is a four and a half year payback, but we'll do what you want.
So Ron, if we went ahead and said, I'm going to spend $91,000, put everything in place, 500 lights, basically, pay that back in four and a half years?
It's a four and a half year payback. The energy savings and maintenance savings, like I said, this is a pretty simple return on investment calculation, but that's what we've come up with.
Because you don't, or you are, do they offer any financing?
They do not. And keep in mind, this rebate, I don't know if Wabash should do that in 2017, it is only 2016 for right now. Now, they did it in 2015, but I don't know if they'll keep it going, so.
We got a loan from the Department of Energy for lighting for a building that we own, based on the energy that was saved.
Okay.
I don't know that we couldn't do it for street lighting. Arguably, we did it for street lighting.
This sounds, thank you-
Sure.
For clear, I mean, you answered kind of every question I think I had.
Yeah, me too.
It's obviously, it's a modernization, and we're going to have to move to it eventually. Right now, there's an economic incentive in the rebate-
Right.
-on the fixtures. And one of the areas of focus of the city of St. Genevieve, that we don't have time, or for whatever reason, we don't put a lot of effort into, is sustainability. And this is a really big opportunity to take a nice step in the city of St. Genevieve from a sustainability standpoint. So to borrow the money and do them all at once, I'm down for that. I'm good for doing it as you want to, and wherever you guys decide a pilot program would be the best, that would make the most sense, let's move forward.
I mean, to me, four and a half years is nothing, and then you're going to save the energy going forward.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's just a cash flow issue. We have $98,000 sitting out.
Yeah, if we could pull that loan thing off.
And if not, it would be just as they needed to be repaired, they'd be replaced.
That would be a longer roll out.
As they go away, you just-
And you know, if we did that, you'd never hear about it.
Right.
And our budget wouldn't feed with it.
Right.
Because it would just be part of the process.
The question that, that we buy our current repair parts, so you have an inventory that we own?
You know, I'll have to double check, but I'm pretty sure it's out at our service center. They're ordered here, and-
And delivered there.
...you get your own bidding, we pick them up.
My only point is, if we move forward, let's try to utilize whatever inventory we have for repairs before we just, you know-
Well, because he's going to check on whether we can return the new ones.
Yeah, because we, we're faced with the same thing. Pardon me, I've got about, citizens has about $10,000 worth of HPS stuff left.
So what do you do with these fixtures when you take them in? Can you sell them somewhere, or are you scrapping them, or what?
That's an excellent question, and what citizens is going to do, we're going to scrap them, and here's why. The whole idea of this program, the whole idea of the rebate, is get them off the system. And to sell them to Joe so he can put them out on the farm, that makes no sense.
Absolutely not.
At the base of purpose. So it was tough, because for an old country boy like me, for sure, because I have a hard time throwing something away that's still working.
I'm doing it right now.
Yeah.
Well, I got them in my building, and I, you don't have to sell me on the merits of it. The energy cost is lower, they last longer.
I just, the only question I've ever asked, or that, since we've been talking about this, somebody asked me, they, we're concerned about the brightness level, and how we, we've always mandated before that we have the soft yellow lights. And then there's also a lot of talk in the technology world now, with LEDs having that blue, blue light to it, which causes sleep disorders, and how they're, is there a concern with these lights that-
Yeah, it's a good question, so the color-
...go to sleep underneath a streetlight.
The color rating that we picked, it's called 5,000 K, that's the white. That's daylight, that's white. You've got to get up to about a 7,000, a 7,500, where it starts turning blue.
Okay.
You back down to about a 2,400, now you have the amber soft look. The freebie that Dave Pinkling, some of our guys, put down by the mill in the ornamental light. So that was free. That come from Evluma, they offered it up, it's a new product. And I said, sure, we'll take them. I got one for City Perryville, one for City of St. Genevieve. So that's a 5,000 K. It's also a 70 watt. That's a higher wattage than what you have in your bulbs, the decorative lighting. So I've already contacted Evluma, and I said, hey, I've got one, City Perryville likes that color. City of St. Genevieve, it's a different setting, we really need something more of an amber. And I said, Ron, I got just what you need, it's a 2,500. And I said, you got any free ones? Well, he doesn't yet. But now, I've got another manufacturer to come and visit me today, actually, and I bumped them. So for the decorative lighting, we'll have to have a different conversation, and actually, the city maintains those themselves. But we'll, we'll help you check things out. I mean, that's what we're here for.
The reason I brought that up, the lights that you're proposing, they, the daylight eliminates that blue-
Yeah, there's no blue.
Okay, that's all.
There's no blue. Now, I've got to have a little disclaimer. The manufacturers say 10-year warranty. The manufacturer, at the end of 10 years, this light's supposed to still have about 75, 80% of its output. So that's what we're going on. We've been testing them for about two years. The manufacturers we had issues with, they didn't hit our mid-list. These are the two companies, actually, American Electric or Acuity, we've been dealing with them for years. Evluma's been around since about the mid-'90s, late-'90s, so they're kind of new, but not brand new. So we have two manufacturers here that we have pretty confidence in. Now, the 250 watt and the 400 watt replacement, we're still working on that. So that's 30, 40 days out yet. So I'll probably be back with Martin. That'd be a higher cost fixture. But here again, and actually, Brett Burek down at City of Perryville, I had the same conversation with him. If nothing else, if you do this pilot area, it gives everybody a better feel for how much light they put out, and, you know, how it spreads, maybe some of the 250s can be a set.
Exactly. We talked about whether there was any kind of method to the distribution of the lights that we have on this nap and everything, but there's no rationale for one wattage over another one.
No, there's no, it's strictly seat of the pants. You know, I know when back in my line superintendent's days, it'd be me, and maybe an alderman, or me and administrator, and we need a light right here, Ron, what do you think? And we'd take a look at how far away the other ones were. Sometimes, the resident, it kind of depended on how loud they were, and we picked a light. Now, the city park, back about, shoot, probably 20 years ago, electrically, we redid that, rebuilt that, citizens did, and there was a little bit of engineering went into that. That's all 250s up there. But their longer spans, they're spaced a little bit more. So there was a little bit of engineering there, by a non-engineer, that was me. But anyway, other than that, it was pretty much seat of the pants. City Perryville's the same way.
I think St. Genevieve has changed their parking lot to LEDs, didn't they?
I can't answer that.
Pretty sure they do.
One thing that always bothers you a little bit in St. Genevieve, just because of things over the years and styles changing, is the consistency of what we got. Because you've got one pole that's got a mercury vapor or high-pressure sodium, and yet, yeah, and the one next to it might have mercury vapor. So you go from an orange light to a white light, and then you might have two more next to. It would be nice to have some consistency.
That's, City of Perryville, exactly the same comment. If, I've got to throw this out there, if you were, and you don't have to decide this tonight or tomorrow, you can get back with us later, if you would decide, let's take advantage of the rebate, and let's just change these babies out. I do need to go back to Wabash and make sure I don't bust their budget. I had to do the same thing with City of Perryville. We've been meeting with both of them at the same time here. So I don't think that's an issue. I really don't, because I've been in discussion with them quite a bit, I was up there yesterday, actually.
How long do you reckon the pilot program lasts? 30 days?
Well, we're going to change out fixtures. You mean in terms of the period to evaluate?
Yes. Yeah, I'd go, I'd go 30, 45 days.
I'm not suggesting 30, I was just asking how long you think.
And it depends however you want to spin it. I mean, how many people do you want to tell about it? Do you just want to monitor yourself? Usually, the public provides you the information whether you want it or not, but I don't have to tell you folks that. But, you know, yeah, I think, I think 30, 45 days is a pretty good, gives you a pretty good feel for what you got. And like I said, I said it earlier, this is what we pay for. We competitively bid everything. And going forward, I'd also like to suggest that instead of you guys getting your own repair parts, if you're comfortable with it, we can do that for you. I mean, we competitively bid everything we buy. And I've got to believe that what you're paying for your stuff and what we're paying can't be very different. And if that helps you, we'll do that. Right now, you buy it, we come get it, we put it on our shelf, and we take it out, it, you know, saves us a trip, kind of. And here again, you can all talk about that, you don't have to answer that now, but-
I think we, my opinion, we already do the, certainly do the pilot thing. And the other thing would be replacing these 73 at a time. Now you're going to introduce a third light, a third looking light into, you already got a white one, and of course, they'd be white like the mercury vapor ones, but now you've got one here at the end of the street that's a new LED light, and you've got, how many years, I mean, how long do the mercury vapor and the high-pressure sodium, how long would it take for us to get through 500 lights?
Well-
Well, if we're doing 73 years, it's going to take six, seven years.
It's a little over one a year. And I was telling Martin, that looks low to me, the amount of repairs. The city of Perryville had twice that many repairs in a year. And I can't explain why it's low.
Take care of our lights.
They've probably got twice as many lights.
You got the same, well, I took that into consideration. What I mean is, this is about 1.2 repairs a year. There's just like 1.8, 1.9 repairs a year. And that's what we experience with our security lights, and so I can't explain that.
Can we agree that to get on board on the pilot-
I think Ron, we're on an area that makes sense, I'll report it to you, but we'll go ahead and do it.
If we can find some financing to-
I'll check that out in the evaluation period, I'll find out what our options are.
Your security lights, those are what, like are in my backyard.
I can say that if we do the, assuming you want to do this, and it sounds like you do, if we just do the most basic thing, and that is change them out as they go bad, we won't feel a bunch of terror-
Right.
-if we do a bunch at a time.
And a loan, like you said.
There's, I think the most important thing about this whole conversation is the sustainability aspect, the reduction of energy that we have to use. That kind of makes it a slam dunk from where I sit, all by itself. Let's get the ball rolling, and as long as there's not, you know, enormous backlash from people saying, hey, you know, your light's blowing through my curtains and shades and everything else.
And we'll get a little bit of backlash, I mean-
Listen, we get a little bit of backlash from what we do.
If you just get a little epi, just great, right?
I think there would be more backlash if we only did a few at a time here, than if we did them. I like the idea of the continuity, if you're going to do it, just make them all the same, and just get it done.
We could get the loan-
The biggest thing is, you're going to have to accept change. It's just like driving an old car for 15 years with no payment, and you buy a brand new, and a lot of them do not like that new vehicle, because they hate the payment. It ain't the vehicle. And that's, you're going to have to accept change.
That's my favorite feature.
That's a big feature. I'm going to add a brand new one.
There's going to be change.
What we've done, what we decided to do is, we're going to change all of our substation lighting right away. We have 7,000 security lights out there, so, but in our substations, we have about 200 and 200-ish. So we're going to, we're going to change all of them at once. It wouldn't surprise me, over about a year or two, if we get enough positive feedback, we might be changing 7,000 lights in the next year or two after that. So just have to see how it all unfolds.
Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Hey, thanks for your time.
Good presentation.
If you think of other questions, if you need to run into Martin, that's fine, you can call me.
No, call Ron directly. Well, that's the reason he's here tonight. He was going over the stuff with me, and I said, how the hell am I going to explain this to the board?
And if I don't answer right away, I will call you back. Sometimes it's a long line, but that's okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you for seeing you all.
All right.
And Martin, I got a little comment on the Viking, Viking trail, we've got to get to that.
I'm great, you too. See you later.